Good afternoon. Welcome back to the Peoria City Council meeting for September 17th, meeting and study session. We are on item number two, subjects for the study session agenda. Study session is an opportunity for us to interact with staff. No votes can be taken.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett, council members. We have one item on our study session agenda this evening, and it's an important item, and it is one that you have talked about in previous economic development and capital improvement discussions, and also, of course, in your budget discussion, and it was even touched upon last week in the council workshop on economic development, and that is the P-83 Entertainment District Streetscape Improvement Project. It's kind of a mouthful, but what it is, is the placemaking, the important and significant placemaking that we have been developing for the area around 83rd and Bell, our important business area near our sports complex, one of the real hubs of commercial activity in the city, and bringing some placemaking to that has been a priority of the council, and the staff has a fairly detailed presentation this evening, and will also touch upon the significant civic engagement and outreach that they have been conducting with the businesses and stakeholders in the P-83 area. So with that, I'll turn it over to Scott White, our Development Services Director, and Andy Granger, our Engineering Director.
Thanks, Carl. Mayor, members of the council, we're happy to be here this afternoon to give you an update, as Carl said, on the P-83 Entertainment District Improvements Project. It's been a while since we've been before council, and we feel it's time to move forward and give you an update on where we are on the project, and also try and get direction from council on some of the concepts that we have as we're going through our design concept report. So tonight, we'd like to, the purpose of the meeting is to provide you an update and some proposed signage and monumentation concepts that we'd like feedback on from you. Scott's going to give you the background on the project to bring you up to date on where we are. We've had, we had an open house on September 4th that was very successful. We had a great turnout, and we'll provide you an update on what the results were from that as we go through this presentation. Then we're going to give you the concepts, show you some of the concepts that we have for the signage and monumentation, as well as some of the various landscape packages and pedestrian crossing concepts that we have, and we'd like your input on those concepts. Lastly, we'll go through the schedule and a funding update of where we are on the project as a whole. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott for background.
Great, well, thank you for that. As you may recall, the Entertainment District, P-83, has been a key initiative and investment zone area under our Economic Development Implementation Strategy, and you may recall some time back, in order for us to envision what could be a new and improved entertainment district in terms of design, in terms of streetscape, in terms of look, in terms of feel, in terms of energy and identity, we contracted with a consulting firm, Gensler, and they came up with some design concepts, some identity concepts, some placemaking, pedestrian orientation, and various concepts that council ultimately adopted and became the springboard of the platform for which the design concept report that Andy's group has been working on over the past year has been moving forward on is the subject matter for tonight. As part of that background, you may recall the Gensler concept called for a bold design, bold colors, something that really pops out, something that grabs your attention, something that's not part of any other design concept for the city, because we want this to be unique, we want this to be an area that grabs people's attention, and that it, through its placemaking and through its pedestrian orientation, really compels people to want to come into our entertainment district. And so with that, Andy has some concepts he's going to be talking to you about tonight in terms of how has that been translated from concept into a design concept report, but also, what I think is important is how do we establish a platform from which we communicate to the public with the various P-83 agendas that we have going on right now? You know, everything from the P-83 Party to the P-83 Streetscape Project, to the PSP Project that we're working on, as well as links to other activities and events and business promotions that are going on. And so, the image desk before you tonight, actually, we've been working on a new webpage for P-83 for some time, in close coordination with the Office of Communication, and we felt it was important to have a webpage that kind of reflected the vision, the vibrancy and energy of P-83 that we're trying to replicate and bring through some of these streetscape concepts and so forth. So we just wanted to share that with you also. This is what we're looking to do in terms of a webpage, because that's going to be how we communicate with the public in terms of the design concepts for the streetscape, the project schedule, when we have various events and festivals for the P-83, we want to log them in here and make it something that's really dynamic and really energizing, as again, that's one of the main points of this design concept for P-83. So with that, as a brief background, then I'll turn it over to Andy, and we'll walk through some of the streetscape options.
Thanks, Scott. So tonight, what we're primarily going to talk about is the Phase One improvements, which are the funded improvements for this fiscal year and next fiscal year. We've got, the design phase is funded in this fiscal year, and the construction is funded in next fiscal year. So what do the Phase One improvements include? They include monumentation at the major intersections along 83rd Avenue, wayfinding signage for pedestrians as well as the vehicular traffic, raised landscape median that will have an enhanced landscape package along 83rd Avenue, and then two pedestrian crossings are proposed at 83rd Ave., so we'll show you some of the concepts that we've developed as part of those pedestrian crossings. Future phases may include similar improvements on Arrowhead Fountain Center Drive and Paradise Lane, as well as roadway modifications along 83rd Avenue. And you can see here, there's the scope and limits of the project along 83rd Ave., and primarily, what we're focusing on is the major intersection improvements in those, the raised landscaping in Phase One.
Andy, I just wanted to verify, you said Phase One is this fiscal year, and Phase Two is next fiscal year, starting next July, is that correct?
The construction of Phase One is funded in next fiscal year.
Oh, okay, so we have design now, construction next, and then future.
And then we'll have future, which is unfunded at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I attended that evening when we looked at the different signage, but what I really didn't see, and maybe this is in a further phase, in the Gensler, you had along the 101 freeway that high signage, and also, you had like the 83rd Street Bridge, you had that as a very nice visual and the stadium, and we're not looking at that in Phase One, is that correct? Or, because I just saw the kind of internal stuff, not the more outside stuff that would be a real signature for the total area.
Yeah, Councilor Ames, Phase One does not include any enhancements to the Skunk Creek Bridge on 83rd Ave., or any of the billboards along the 101 at this time. What we wanted to focus on is segmenting the phased improvements. As you know, during the capital program budgeting session last year, this is one thing that was, it was first funded last year as part of the capital budget to get an initial start on the project and make sure that we feel comfortable with the improvements that we're putting along 83rd Ave., which we consider to be the spine of the project and the entertainment district.
Yeah, I guess I have a little different viewpoint. When you go internally, it's more signage that is directed toward different businesses, although some of it is street stuff too, particularly along Bell there. But to me, what the powerful impact is that there's a real signature kind of signage in terms of wrapping around there that is identified as P-83 regardless of, at that point, what the businesses are. Of course, the businesses are important, and once you get in there, you have additional signage that is part of the overall concept, and then that works down toward actual direction to businesses. Is that still the overall plan? And, because I don't want to, in my mind, I don't want to start somewhere and never end up with what the more impacting concept was.
Yeah, Councilor Ames, what we do show, and you'll see it in some of our concepts, is at the major intersections, especially in the entry points, that we feel are the entry points into the entertainment district, which is Arrowhead Fountain Center Drive and Bell Road, as well as 83rd and Bell, we'll have some significant entry monuments that really signify the entryway into P-83, and we'll show you those further in some of these further slides.
Okay.
So with that, as we stated in the introduction, we did have an open house on September 4th at Arizona Broadway Theater. We had a great turnout, a lot of the businesses attended the meeting, as well as some of our council members, and what the intent of that open house was, is to get feedback from our citizens and our business owners on some different concepts that could be the possibility for the wayfinding, monumentation, landscaping, and pedestrian improvements along 83rd Ave. So there was three significant or major concepts that we are going to show you today. One was a concrete concept, a gabian concept, and a metal concept for the monumentation along 83rd Ave., and so we'll give you a little bit more detail on those three concepts. The first is the concrete concept, and this shows what the monumentation could be with a video board at Arrowhead Fountain Center Drive. So if you're driving west on Bell Road and coming up on Arrowhead Fountain Center Drive, this is what you would see for monumentation, really signifying that this is the 83rd Ave. Entertainment District, and it's in an exposed aggregate type of concrete finish, a nice finish with the Peoria 83 there on the monumentation also. Similarly, at Bell Road and 83rd Avenue, another entry monument to signify that you're entering the 83rd Ave. District, the Peoria 83 signage with the exposed aggregate and a video board, as well as the pylons there, you see the colorful pylons that Scott White was talking about, where it gives it more of a vibrant look and really stands out as far as the colors are concerned. At night, those would light up also.
Those large signs, they have color on them, are they, is there something that would make them changeable for holidays or things like that?
We hadn't envisioned that, we couldn't look at that, but we did look at potentially rotating the colors where you would see these pylons in, along 83rd Avenue, and they would rotate in color where you'd have the blue go for five or 10 seconds, and then the green, and then the pink, or whatever color. These are the three colors that we were proposing, and I think they were part of the original Gensler Report too, as far as their proposed color scheme.
Okay, and the digital sign, you can really only see that from one direction? You can't see it if you're heading east on Bell Road?
You can see it if you're, yes, if you're heading east on Bell Road, you're right, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to see it unless you're right at that intersection. Our concern, and we're going to look at this, as far as in front of In-N-Out, we've got limited right-of-way, which is on the other corner of 83rd and Bell.
Okay, yeah.
So that's where, on Arrowhead Fountain Center Drive, we thought we'd have the opportunity for the eastbound traffic to hit, to see the monumentation and the video board there.
I really love the billboard sign, the digital being able to be changeable, but it seems to me that if we could, I don't know, angle it a little bit, we could, we could give it more exposure, because you're going to have to look across the entire intersection to see it this way, and if you could also see it from, you know, heading the other direction, the cars are closer to it there, I don't know, it just seems like it might be able to have, you know, more people exposed to that sign.
Yeah, another possibility potentially is to have it, you know, kind of a three-sided monumentation there, where you potentially have to have two video boards, but you could have one for the eastbound traffic also.
It's only money, isn't it? Yeah.
We can look at that.
Yeah, thanks.
Andy, you.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards.
I thought you said Ames.
You're next.
Andy, you had mentioned that there would be two signs on 83rd, or just one, either at the Unical or at the In-N-Outs?
For the video board.
For this billboard?
Yeah, this is where we're proposing it right now. We could potentially put it in front of the In-N-Out. We have concerns that, and we haven't approached the In-N-Out business owners yet, but we have limited right-of-way there, and I think it's, it would have less impact if it was on this corner, but we'll evaluate both intersection corners.
I like the concept, I like the design, my only concern is with this busy intersection, I don't want to have, like if we're doing promotion for a band or an upcoming event, if we're going to be displaying, you know, like a short video or something like that, I don't want to distract traffic and have it be the cause of an accident, because somebody's watching a snippet of a band that's performing coming up.
I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, I'm wondering the scale of this, it's really quite small, particularly cars moving down the street, either 83rd or Bell, well, I don't think people will be able to read it at this scale. And you've got a lot of other things distracting you, all the trees around it and so on too. I mean, we're focusing on it, we're looking at it, but someone driving is looking at the whole area there, so I think something larger and probably maybe located somewhere else might be, have a better impact. I think this is kind of a small scale here.
Counselor, what we can look at, again, we're in the design concept phase, right now, what we propose the size of these to be is approximately five by eight. We do propose to have a video board at Paradise Lane and 83rd Ave. too, that potentially could be a bigger board. Our concern, one of our concerns, is just blocking the buildings behind them, yes, but we can evaluate that.
Ms. Garland.
Well, I think the consideration is that this is a monument sign, and it's not a billboard, and the fact that it has, you know, moving pieces on it is going to draw people's attention to it, so we don't want to, I don't think confuse the two things. It's, you know, it's not a billboard, it's not going to be on the freeway, it's going to be in place of what in the past was a fountain, remember, there was a fountain, there's a couple fountains, Fountain Center Drive, and I think that was a monument sign, something to make you look in that area, and that's what this takes the place of. And I think these large pylons actually do draw your attention, especially if they have lights on them, and the lights at night are going to be changeable?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks.
I think the pylons are of a sufficient scale, I just don't see the screen, five by eight is not very big, that's the size of the signs, larger signs we do, isn't it? Campaigning signs, five by eight, we just put our whole name there.
We'll evaluate that further.
It costs us money to do this, and if at the end, it doesn't really draw the attention that well, like the larger pylons might, is something, and we want to get things in people's minds, not just at that moment, but over a longer term, as they drive down here, they get that concept of P-83 in their minds.
We have two more of the concrete concept, both of them are on Paradise Lane at the two different corners, on the south side of 83rd Ave. and Paradise Lane. This would be in front of the Alter Group property, this would be a larger monument sign that really signifies P-83 with the concrete concept, and again, another video board there. And then on the other corner, in front of the PF Chang's, a smaller monumentation sign, but really signifies you're entering the P-83 district at Paradise Lane, along with the pylons. And this shows the wayfinding concept that goes along with the concrete concept. You'll see, this is for more of the traveling public, we'll show you in a future slide what it would look like for pedestrians also, for more of wayfinding for the pedestrians. Our gabian concept, we're going to show you the same corners and the same corner treatment, but with a different type of material. So this is the gabian concept, where we've got the river run that's inside of our metal cages that you see in a lot of drainage improvement projects, but it's also used as an architectural feature in a lot of areas. So similar concept to the concrete concept, different material, and a little bit of a different look. So this is at Arrowhead Fountain Center Drive with the video board, and then a similar concept at Bell Road and 83rd Avenue, and then again, at Paradise Lane. Now, the signage here is a little bit different than the concrete concept, it's a little more unique, and it really pulls out the Peoria Sports Complex District, as well as P-83 signages on top of the billboard to really signify the P-83 area. And then again, in front of PF Chang's, our Peoria 83 monumentation and pylons, which are a little bit different, not as much color as the other concept, just to give a little bit of a different feel. And at the end of these three concepts, we'll, we'll give you what the feedback was from the business owners and the people that attended the open house also.
Could you back up one?
Sure.
Isn't that location where the sign is for the stadium?
Yes.
So we would replace that?
This would replace that signage, and we're going to work with the stadium management team as far as how we would manage the, who would own and manage the content for the video board.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, go to the next slide, please. Again, I have a concern that P-83, it's fine, but it, I think it may be too small. We should try to make those bigger, so they really, that's what stands out, even more so than the wall.
Yeah, I agree, Councilor Ames, and that's some of the feedback that we got at the open house also.
Thank you.
And then again, here's some of the vehicular traffic, wayfinding signage that you see on the outside in the yellow signs, and then more of the pedestrian type of signage for the pedestrians to find the businesses within the entertainment district, and this is the concept for that gabian monumentation package. And lastly, is the metal sign concept that was part of the original Gensler Report. This is what the metal sign package, stainless steel metal signs would look like at Arrowhead Fountain Center Drive with the video board concept, the same concept at 83rd and Bell Road, and it does have similar pylons with the colors that could light up. The metal signs at Paradise Lane, this is very similar architectural features to the concrete, and just a different material. And lastly, in front of PF Chang's.
Is there a large cost differential?
We think it would be slightly more expensive, we haven't gone through the detailed evaluation of it, but they're all probably going to be similar in cost, this would probably be a little bit more as far as stainless steel is concerned.
Is the metal brushed metal, or is it going to be reflective?
Be a stainless steel type of metal.
So I don't know.
I would call it more of a brushed metal.
So if the sun is shining on that metal, is it going to be reflective and blinding people as they're driving? I mean, if you go back to the slide before this, it's a pretty big sign with a lot of metal on it, that.
Yeah, I mean, that is something that we can, as far as in the final design, we can look at too, as far as making sure that it's not reflective, there's different coating treatments that you can put on the metal to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I looked at all of those at the meeting, and I think the brushed metal one stood out the best for me, but you mentioned there that it might have a little more maintenance involved with it, and now Kathy's brought up, you know, we don't want it to blind people in their cars as well, but it does seem to stand out differently, it doesn't blend in with the trees and walls, which I think is not, it's more of an advantage for it to stand out.
Yeah, it does pop out. What we want to show you next is what we got from feedback, we did get written comments from all of the business owners and the other people that attended, citizens that attended the open house on September 4th, we had over 50 people attend the open house, and this is the results from the written comments that we've gotten back, both from emails as well as written comments that we got from people that attended the open house. As you can see, the concrete concept got a majority of the vote at 62%, and the gabian and metal concept were at 23% and 15%. So with that, we took those results from that meeting, and our staff over the last couple of weeks have tried to come up with an alternative that combines the concrete and the gabian concept, they're very similar, so we wanted to provide an additional look as an proposed alternative that we could also look and evaluate. So here's our new design that incorporates those two concepts that got the most votes. It's the concrete concept with more of the gabians at the low-lying area. It brings the P-83 signage on the monument up to the top, so it's more visible and pops out more, and it has the pillars with the colors in them. So it pops out more, it makes it a little bit more visible than both of the concrete concept and the gabian concept. You'll also notice that it takes a little bit of the design aesthetics that we have in our entry monuments, our gabians are formed and a little bit similarly to this. So it gives it a little bit of a Peoria flavor, but it also is differentiated from that in with the colors and the text for the signage itself, as well as the video board.
And this is what staff is recommending?
This is our proposal of the top two concepts, so yeah, this is what staff would recommend as something that's for ease of construction, maintenance, but we do realize that any three of these would work, or four of these with this additional concept. So with that, we have two other concepts that we'd like, the landscape concept that we'd like to show you, as well as the pedestrian crossing concept. Before we get to that, we'd really like direction on this, the monumentation and wayfinding package from council.
I really like this concept, where you married those two concepts, and the reason is, is because I like the concrete, it's probably fairly cost-effective, but the gabion, having that down low for pedestrians, that's what they're going to see, and then I think the concrete is more visible if you're driving by quickly. So I like the combination of the two. I think it's got a good design to it, and you're right, it does match our monument signs that we already have, and it says Peoria, and then you can still have the colors on the pylon signs, because I really like those. So I think it's a good, I think you did a good job on that. I like it.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Andy, great job. First off, I want to thank you and your staff for putting on the showcase over at the ABT, and we had a great turnout. I think by you taking the comments that the residents and the businesses recommended with the 62%, 23, and 15, and married them together to come up with a consistent, I think that everybody will be happy with, I think says a lot for your staff too, that you're listening to what the residents and the businesses are saying. So I like this design, I think this is the one that I would recommend.
Thank you.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, how many people does this represent?
The concrete concept that got 62%, that was a representation of what the people that attended the open house.
Was it like 50 people?
There was 50 people there, not all of them submitted comment cards, but we did get emails. We did also get an email from Greg Page, who represents a lot of the business, the smaller business owners in the district, and after polling and presenting this concept to his association after our meeting, they recommended the concrete option for us too.
Okay, yeah, and I could see why people would, it does look nice, but I get back to, does it really stand out separately as well? I think the metal stands out the best, to identify it as a unique place, as opposed to, this fits in real well with the trees and so on, but maybe that's a negative in terms of identifying the place as unique and different. In the long run, people just kind of get very used to it, but I'm happy with the scale of this one, as opposed to some of the scale on the eight by five billboard and some of the names, and you've got those comments too, from people?
Yes.
Particularly the name scale, right? Scale, it needs to be larger.
Yes. One of the other things that we're going to really concentrate on when we get to final design is the lighting package also, so at night, this really stands out. We can add a glass material into the gabians also, and have some uplighting into that that really makes that stand out, so at night, when people are driving through it, it even makes it more vibrant.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment, I think I was at that meeting, and I believe you did a great job on this. It looks great, and I supported that P-83, the concrete, you know, I think it looks great. Also, the monument, was that on 83rd and Bell?
The concept we're showing here is at 83rd and Paradise, but there would be one at 83rd and Bell also. 83rd and Bell also.
Can I see the one at 83rd and Bell?
We don't have it for this option. This was kind of a last-minute option that we put together based on the other, the top two options. So we could only create or generate one, this concept for this one corner at this time.
Okay. Well, I was just going to say that no matter which way you come, you're going to be able to see those signs.
Yeah.
I don't think you should move them. I think they, just the way you get them there, they look great. You all did a great job, and go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also throw my two cents, I like the combined concepts. It's very good. Mr. Ames?
Yeah, are you still working with Gensler on this, or is someone else now?
Right now, we have, we've hired Aztec, the engineering firm, to complete our design concept report. But we've taken a lot of the Gensler concepts that were identified in the master planning process into consideration during this process. Just one last note on this also, is when we complete the design concept report, we're still going to have all of the different alternatives within the concept report identified, so that if you did have a business come in, say a Chase Bank, which does use the metal type of monumentation, we'll have the standards, the signed standards for the metal signage if they want to use that package, because it is, it still uses the same colors and text. So whoever comes in, if they wanted to use the metal signage in front of their building, they could, and incorporate that into the P-83 district when we're completed.
Wow. Yeah, that could be nice, but you don't want a lot of disparate.
You need some consistency, too.
Next, again, as part of that open house, we did come up with two different landscape concepts through the design concept report, and we showed these to the public. One was a palm tree, or a tropical resort type of theme, and the other one was the desert landscape type of theme with shade trees. The denser trees in the landscape median is part of the shade tree theme, and more of the high palms, resort-type feel along the landscape median, along 83rd Avenue is part of the palm tree theme. A resounding number of business owners liked the palm tree theme, primarily for visibility. They didn't like the fact that the dense trees would obstruct the view from the traveling public to their adjacent businesses. So staff does recommend the palm tree theme to move forward with, but we did want council input on this also.
Any comments from council on that? Mr. Ames?
Yeah, the palm tree is better for a lot of reasons, including if you have too much shrubbery, the signs will become hidden in that shrubbery. Scrubbery. Shrubbery. Scrubbery, too.
Ms. Carlin.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we need to consider what the business owners want. This is all about, you know, making their environment more conducive to people finding them and doing business, and, you know, pedestrians wanting to go to their businesses. So we really need to consider what their request is. Palm trees, do it.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I like the bottom one. I'm not a big fan of palm trees. If I get an audit, tell them no more palm trees, I'd be the first one to sign it, because I know if it's on city property, it's going to be taken care of, I hope. That's the only thing I'm concerned about, because I've seen palm trees that look ugly. So I'm not in favor of palm trees, but if that's what the people want, that's going to have to get.
Thank you. And lastly, as I stated, we're looking for ease of pedestrian crossings across 83rd Avenue, especially during the spring training season. We've got a lot of pedestrians that park on the west side of 83rd Ave and travel across to get to the stadium. So we want to make it easier, and we've really focused on some Z crossings that promote safety, as well as ease of crossing across of 83rd Avenue. So we came up with two different themes for the Z crossings. Again, this one, one of them would be south of Stadium Way, and one would be north of Stadium Way. One is a fencing theme with the palm trees and a fenced-in area that can provide shade on the canopy. And the other one is a sail theme, which provides more color, but can also provide shade within the landscape median along 83rd Avenue. And to give you the feedback of what the business owners, there wasn't as much, they weren't as vocal and decisive about which one they liked here, but primarily the ones that did speak up liked the sail theme, because it provided added color and vibrancy for the area.
Comments? Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, Andy, I like the sail theme myself. I think it adds a little bit more color. I think with the vineage, over time, that's just going to get overgrown. And again, we're trying to make sure that people can see from one side to the other to see what's going on, and I think by putting all of that vine, that's going to obstruct the view.
Yeah.
So I really like the fact that you've got the color in there, mixed with the colors of the signage, the pinks, the yellows, and everything. I think it's just really going to pop. So, thank you.
Ms. Carlin?
And I completely agree. I think the sails add not only color, but character, and it just makes us look different. I think the other, the fencing theme, looks more like a bus stop. It's traditional, and this looks a little more inviting. Makes people, you can see it from a long distance also. I like the sail theme.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, the sail theme is much better. Stands out, it gives some identity. The other looks, like Kathy said, it could be a bus stop. Now, that sails, it's still, they're kind of connected, so you walk under, you get a, like a full shade still?
Yeah, we would look to design it so that there is a shade component to it.
Mr. Patel?
Andy, have you, I like the sail theme myself, but have you taken into consideration the long-term maintenance? Those are going to be out in the sun 24/7, and they'll be potentially faded and perhaps ripped. So have you taken that into consideration?
That is one of our concerns. When you look at some of the Duer fabrics, they do tend to last longer than they used to. A lot of that has to do with the wind component also, but we will look at that as part of the design, and make sure that we detail out a fabric that will last longer, so that we don't have as much of a maintenance issue involved.
Is there a system whereby you can collapse them? Like during the monsoon season, when the winds come up, they would fold up?
I'm not sure, but I think you can design them, so that you're not going to have that issue as far as the wind is concerned, but I'm not an expert on it.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Edwards?
Again, Andy, great job. I'd just like to task your department, as we're doing this, starting hopefully in July of next year, that you're being conscious of the budget, obviously. Because what I would definitely kind of task you guys to do is to look into Phase Two and what it's going to take from a budget standpoint to get that going. Because I don't want to start Phase One and then have it stall and not complete the other phases, because we have other businesses throughout the area that are going to depend, if we start seeing Phase One go, the other businesses are going to say, well, what about us? Especially down Paradise Lane. And so I really want to be able to extend this going further. And then also, have you worked with, I know you've worked with some of the local businesses, but as far as, once we get a design agreed upon, then at what point will you have some kind of standards so that the businesses that are kind of off the beaten path could do similar signage for their businesses to tie in to the theme that we're doing, like an ABT?
Yeah, well, once we finish our design concept report and get to final design, we'll work with our planning department as far as our site ordinance is concerned, and specifically for this area, to make sure that we can incorporate those sign packages, and make sure that from a zoning standpoint, they can be permitted with the businesses.
Okay. And again, I encourage you, one of the first slides you had, the website design, I really encourage you guys to get that up and running, so that a lot of the businesses really want to be able to track the progress that we're making. And I know that I'm doing my part from doing email blast to the residents that I have email information about, but if we have something out on a website that they can track the progress, I think that's going to be all the more helpful for them.
Sure, we plan on doing that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just one last slide on this, on the crossing concept. This is one of the more extravagant type of Z crossings that you'll have in the valley. It's in Scottsdale in front of Kirland Crossings, and it was one of part of the Scottsdale Road Capital Project. But you see the low-lying walls that we could build into that sail concept, and then with the sails above it, it provides a nice atmosphere with the Hawk Crossing. So we plan on potentially incorporating our Gabian walls as part of the Z crossing concept with this, with the sails above it. But this just shows a real-life picture of what we could have out there. So next steps. Right now, we're at the study session, giving an update to council, and we appreciate your feedback and direction on our concepts. With that, we've got clear direction to move forward and complete the final DCR, which we plan to do by the end of the year, and move right into final design and plan preparation in time for next fiscal year's budget, construction budget. So we can anticipate starting construction as early as July of 2014. We anticipate a six-month construction window, and hopefully get done by January of 2015 for the business owners that really are anticipating that this, and highly excited about these improvements being completed. And lastly, just a funding scenario. We talked about the current fiscal year funding for the design portion of the project is approximately $500,000. The fiscal year '15 construction budget is $3.8 million. And as we discussed, the future phases at this point are unfunded, but we will work closely with our budget department as part of, for the next budget study session, to get more detail on the Phase Two, Three, and Four, which will be part of our design concept report, so we can incorporate that potentially into our next capital program.
Questions, comments?
And that's the end of our presentation.
I have one item from the Call of Public, Mike Oliver.
Thank you, Mayor, and council. I just wanted to be careful that what we're trying to create here in the Peoria district is something very special, unique, something that's really going to put the west side on the map. And I think Gensler did a really good job of bringing that excitement and the lights to life, and I want to be careful not to get too monotone on the monuments at the corners. One of the concerns of Ernst &amp; Young was visibility. The pylons along 83rd Avenue, I think they were maybe 20 or 30 feet tall, changing colors from Skunk Creek all the way to Bell Road, really gives it a landmark. You know, people are going to be attracted by the lights. I think the importance of doing Skunk Creek Bridge eventually is a private, a public billboard for the city. Right now, that bridge right now is pretty sad-looking. It's just a gray, plain old basic bridge, and for the city of Peoria to use it for a beacon to capture the view along the 101 is really going to help put this on the map. So to me, this is a very special place that we're trying to create, and of course, I've got some stake in it that's going to be coming here shortly, but the Ernst &amp; Young really had concerns about visibility, and I think the Gensler package really hit the visibility. And so I'm looking forward to the city moving forward on something that's radiant and vibrant and exciting, because that's what the people on the west side of town need. We need that attraction and that location to go to and be seen at. And we've got the platform for it, and I think we just need to bring the rest of the components together. And I think it's very important on Paradise Lane to continue the theme down Paradise Lane, too. I'm hoping the phases are going to come quickly, so the district is a whole, instead of, okay, we've got a quarter-mile of district, and two years, we're going to have another quarter-mile of district. I mean, right now, it's 547 acres, and I think everybody's included in that. So I'm looking forward to all the phases happening, and I think the scale of the monuments that Andy you showed tonight on 83rd Avenue seemed to be a lot smaller scale than Paradise Lane and 83rd Avenue. And I think 83rd Avenue and Bell and Skunk Creek and 83rd Avenue need to be big gateways and entries that, hey, I've arrived at a special place, and this is it, this is where we came to be at. So I'm a little concerned about the scale and the monotone colors, that it's not going to be, you know, I want people to feel like they're coming into a radiant district, rather than pulling into a big-box vestard supermarket, you know? The district is above any supermarket or any retail center, and I think it needs to act on that. So those were my thoughts anyways. And I do like the palm trees, I do like the sails. The Z crossing is very important, especially for my project to across the street, for the connectivity in the low walls that Andy was speaking of, are very important in the Z crossing, because it makes the people who get stuck in the median during the traffic hawk feel safe for being staged in the middle, because not everybody makes it across all the time, especially game time. So those walls seem to give a sense of security, and I think that's very important. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? We're all done? We're adjourned. Regular meeting is 7:00 P.M.